Call the committee of the whole meeting. To order February 26, 2024 at 6:31 PM. Disclosure of punitive interest in general nature thereof. None. Deputations and delegations, we have none. Adoption of meeting agenda. Draft motion. Sorry, give me just a minute, I gotta turn off Sam here. Draft motion be resolved, the council approved the agenda of the committee of the whole meeting dated February 6, 2024. As presented, mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper. Counselor Hughes. Any discussion on the agenda items? Okay, all in favor? I can see you, Angela.
Yeah, she is.
Carrie. Staff reports. 5.1 Public Works, January 2024. 5.2 Animal Control, January 24, 2024. 5.3 Bylaw Enforcement, January 2024. 5.4 Cobalt Public Library Minutes, September 6, 2023, December 13, 2023, December 17, 2023, December 28, 2023. Draft motion be resolved that council accept the staff reports as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Anderson, Counselor Starcheck. Okay, discussion on any of the reports? None? All right. All in favor? Carrie? Items for council consideration, draft motion be resolved, the council reviewed the items for council consideration as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Hughes and Counselor Anderson. And discussion, we'll go through them. 6.1 Draft Bylaw Number 2024- -XX to regulate smoking and vaping within the town of Cobalt. There is a staff report included. Any discussion on this item, Counselor Wilcox?
I was a little bit concerned while I was reading it, and that's one of the reasons I asked for the Smoking Act that was passed a little while ago. The act says that residences are not included under the act, and yet in our bylaw. I had a question about. Gosh, where did it go? Private dwelling means private self-contained living quarters in any detached or multi-unit building facility that is not owned by the municipality. And I'm wondering, does that mean then that the living quarters in the Fraser are covered under this?
Yes, because that facility would be owned by the municipality.
Yeah. So no one is able to smoke in the residences in the Fraser Building, DSO side of rural.
So totally smoke-free building?
Yes.
Because it's been three years.
It's a municipal building defined as one, so.
Any other questions? Counselor Anderson?
Just one reading it through the the objection I had to the last one, I did vote against the last one, I was the only one. Because the way something was worded, and I was just reading it through again a second, third, and fourth time, and that's corrected, so I'm happy now.
Anything else? Okay, 6.1.
We're supposed to bring this then to our regular council meeting then?
Yes. 6.2 Draft Bylaw Number 2024 XX. Amendment Number 3 to Bylaw 2015-016, public waste management owners responsible for containers. And again, there's a staff report. Included for that. Discussion on this? Counselor Wilcox?
I had problems when I read this with the change that was indicated to have. The owner shall be responsible for the full cost for replacement. If it's damaged. And the change, I guess, on this would be the owner shall be responsible for the full cost of replacement. And Steve, perhaps you can tell me who you mean by the owner in that instance?
The owner of it would be the individual, it stays with the property, so if you move to a different residence in the municipality of Cobalt, it would stay with that residence.
Yes.
Would not change, so it would be the owner of the home.
Why? Because that doesn't say that when the program was rolled out, and it doesn't say that in the bylaw. In the rollout, it says the 2014 rollout, information on distribution was made to the residents in the initial rollout, and having trouble finding my notes here. Yeah, each household will be supplied with two carts. And they will be provided by the town. So the town owns carts, not the owner of the property. The bylaw 2.444 defines the owner as being the owner of the property only, not the containers. 341 said approved, containers are assigned to the designated property, but not to the owner's property. So I can't see why the owners of the property would be asked to pay for a container that's stolen when the container is the property of the town.
I can actually answer that because it's the owner of the property's responsibility to secure those bins, to make sure they're not stolen. Just like an example is if you have a bike and you don't have the bike secured, and somebody steals the bike, you're not gonna go and tell the story, you need a replacement bike because somebody stole the bike. The households were provided with the bins. It's your responsibility while you have that bin to keep it secured, and if it's not secured and somebody steals it, then that's on you to replace it. It shouldn't be up to the town to keep replacing bins.
I'll respond in a minute, but I think Gary wanted to say something.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes, I think somewhere in there it said, if you get a police report, you won't be charged for the first time that it's stolen. That was on the previous one, and that was as a learning tool to see how we learn over the next 10 years. So you will pay for it now if it's stolen the first time? They don't get a free one no more? It's been in circulation now for 10 years. Waste measure. The cost to replace these bins, it varies from $65 to $95 as well, takes a minimum order from the manufacturer of 150, so plus a 3, over $3,000 shipping charge.
So they're not cheap for the municipality to even buy?
Where are they coming from?
Actually, it's in conjunction with the Tumisqamishores where it was all initially brought in.
So we'd have to order 150 with Cobalt behind it?
I would check with Tumisqamishores and see if we can tie in with a bulk order if required. But right now, we still have some still in stock here. I think it was seven recyclable and 10 waste.
Counselor Cooper?
So does the town still replace the damaged bins? Like if the plow hits it or throw for garbage day and the guy on the garbage truck runs it over, who pays for it? Homeowner? Are we getting away from that too? Then it's all on the homeowners. Or if a car comes by and runs it over? Or close to the edge of the road?
Well, right now, it blows. The wind blows and you know, probably more.
Well, as stated here in the report, policy back in 2015-016 to address, okay, damaged bin by owner neglect, it was owner pays for replacement.
But if the plow hits it, if it's garbage day and your bins at the side for garbage and the plow hits it, that would be owner neglect?
Well, garbage is a bin one, you have to prove that. It's not our, like, it's not the homeowners neglect either, they put it out to the curb, and then somebody comes ripping by and runs it over the car or pickup truck or whatever, because they're not paying attention. It shouldn't be the homeowner's responsibility, your insurance won't pay for it because it's only worth 75 or 100 bucks. Some people won't be able to afford that. At the rate everything's going right now.
So do these three, 1, 2, 3 come off of our new policy? They're on the 15, oh, 16, so they're not included on our new policy?
No, it has changed on there, see houses damaged bin, oh yeah, by town, town, please, but stolen bin, town provide a replacement bin, owner must provide a police report, that has now changed.
That has changed. Okay.
That's the recommended, excuse me.
Counselor Wilcox?
Again, I would go back to the fact that when the town rolled out this program 10 years ago, it was a deal with the method in which garbage and recycling are going to be collected. The town took responsibility for purchasing the bins and for allotting them to the individual properties in the town. And in their bylaw, they take responsibility if they're stolen or if the town damages. And I think that's perfectly reasonable, when it's our property, we should be responsible for it. To ask a homeowner to secure it so it can't be stolen, I'm sorry, but I haven't seen anybody chaining them up or tying them up or putting them in sheds and locking them up. I think that is just a very unlikely scenario.
Yeah, we won't have my house now because my husband's dead.
You have one of the rarities then.
Yes.
Nobody on my street does, and I think that's asking way too much of an owner.
That was the bear.
Counselor Hughes?
Yeah, just a quick question about how many bins have we been asked to replace or how many situations have we come across where we had to supply somebody with a new bin? Do they have a number for that or?
He didn't, an email.
Since project inception, there have been nine bins installed. Okay. Not real, yeah, from our property on Earl Street, remember? I had to get two replacements because we were down, or one or two, I can't remember, we had to get them replaced. And then we had an extra one show up because he used it for the food bank, and we had five there, it was supposed to have four, I was saying we had five recycling bins for a while, and so we had to get that removed. Weird.
Counselor Cooper?
I don't think this is necessary, I don't, there's one bin a year. You do. Right? Throw that in the garbage. For one bin a year for 75 bucks, we're gonna spend what, a half an hour arguing about it? Defer it to the next council. In four years.
Okay, so the decision of council is to.
Maybe not worry about it until it becomes more of a problem?
Counselor Starcheck?
Yeah, I don't think it's, it doesn't, I don't, it's not happening often, like you said, it's inception, right, or wrong? It's very rare, we have to, I think you'd have to look at it in individual circumstances to see what actually happened and why it went missing or got damaged or whatever. Like, I see them when I'm driving the bus, actually, on the mornings and during the whisker, you'll see some, I don't, it's due to the guard, the person that's doing it, but there's sometimes or tipped up or offside, like, on its side or they're in the middle of the lane. You know, kinds of stuff there, so I don't know.
Counselor Cooper?
I said my piece.
Counselor Anderson?
I don't see it's any big deal.
Oh, I'm all for deferring till later.
The direction is they got to follow him.
Me too, and I'm okay with just leaving it, I agree that there aren't very many per year, and they do still have to provide a police report, right? So there is proof, I mean, ideally, they should be responsible, but they also have the inconvenience if it's gone, so I think they do want to be responsible. So let's leave it until it's a real problem.
Okay. 6.3 Tumisqamishore Municipal Services Association Planner Opt-In, Opt-Out. Okay. Jim Diamond is retiring, so I'll start off this discussion, I think this is something that we need as we get more people, the turnover of properties in Cobalt. And there have been a few instances where the staff has had to, a lot of planning questions and a lot of work on planning. I think that this is definitely something that's worthwhile. Because that's not their area of expertise or staff, so it takes a longer amount of time, and it takes time away from other things that need to be.
One very positive aspect of this is that work, this individual, the planner works hand-in-hand with our chief building official, David Barton. So communications right there in the building office, so.
So we only pay the 2,500 yearly to have this, and then the others are just, as the applications come in, they're built done?
Yeah, it's gonna be a trial, as they say, trial and error for the first year because they're implementing this part of the system. And communities have the option of opting in, opting out, so.
We need an official planner. Do we actually need one? Jim's done all the work, he's done all the legwork now. I'm just looking at the dollars and cents at the end because it's gonna be a good year.
Well, we've just sold some vacant properties, so do we need a planner? Counselor Hunter?
I definitely think we need a planner, and I think it's fantastic that it's Jennifer Pie, because she does have extensive experience from having been the Tumisqamishore's planner, I've, I've worked with her and she's great. And it's, I've just seen challenges, not just in Cobalt, but with other people wanting to build or do projects, and they don't know how or where, and Jennifer will be great for giving starting direction. I think it's really essential, and then there's the consultation fee, so it doesn't cost the town for people to ask questions, they'll have to pay that consultation fee, but at least they'll have somewhere to go. And like you said, our, our office staff, that's not their area of expertise, they don't have the training to properly answer the questions, and there's big consequences if they answer incorrectly. Coleman has had that where they've issued made remarks, and even Cobalt in the past where decisions were made without consulting a planner to find out that they were not correct. So I think this is a great opportunity.
I did speak to Jim Diamond about the planner, Jennifer Pie spoke very highly.
Counselor Hughes, are you with us?
Yeah, I was just thinking, we're already on the hook for 2,500 anyways, so we need more, right? It's cheap.
For to retain a planner, yes, definitely. Yeah, we've been lucky for a number of years with Jim.
We shouldn't need too much done with the official plan we just brought in, right?
It's not just for the official plan, it's also for homeowners who may want to do something else with their property. Make sure it falls within our plan. Right? So we'll move back to.
Question is to approve, opt-in?
Yeah. Counselor Wilcox, notice of motion, closed meeting materials. Discussion on the email that was sent. I can start us off. I have no problem with council wanting to see closed meeting material, if they want to make an appointment and come to the town office to view them. But sending closed meeting material via electronic means, I don't think is a very secure or responsible manner to handle closed meeting material. How does the document get returned back to the town? When we have a closed meeting, the material stays here and it doesn't leave the chambers. So you send it out via email, it doesn't come back. Counselor Cooper?
The document's out right now.
Sorry?
It's out right now, this isn't the only copies of it, Angela has a copy.
And that's.
It went electronically, right, so we're all under oath to not put this out. So it doesn't matter.
Okay, and if somebody hacks your email?
Somebody get hacked the town's email.
Counselor Anderson? My objection to putting it out on the town's email is that at any time, if someone comes up with a good, good enough reason, you can go to, you know, the government and say, I want, I want to see all these emails for any specific subject. And if that email is sitting there in our, in our boxes, you know, in our agenda, before we've had a chance to deal with it and discuss it in private, which is what this is, then it's out there, and maybe it's something that, after we finish discussing it, goes back in the box and we say no. And, but if it's out there in our email through the privacy commission, whatever you call it, it could be out there. So that, that's my main objection, we've seen that we've had some, some trouble with our emails going through. This is almost, well, several months ago. The way I went in, my, my town email was totally screwed up and had to reset a lot of stuff and everything because of something that came in. I don't want anything that's sensitive that should be imposed to be in that group of stuff, that group of emails.
I was just gonna say, if the government wanted to come after all the emails or whatever, like an ombudsman or whoever, we wouldn't, they wouldn't have access to that necessarily, I think that would be probably blocked from them. Not like they're just gonna hit a button and everything, we got on emails, did we download?
You never know what someone decides, this is not us deciding.
I think the government would probably decide that, if that's confidential, then I don't think that would be released.
If you're, I don't know for sure, you're under investigation, you're basically, you, if you're receiving, whatever device you're receiving your emails on, they can take that device until they're done their investigation.
You can track too, right? Tumisqamishore set it up so that if anybody forwarded it, it would send an alarm to their, their CAO.
Yeah, but it's too late then if it's forward.
Yeah, but then you put them in front of the integrity commissioner if you forward it.
Yeah, that's encryption software, and then that's another cost for us to.
But it doesn't get out any, like, tonight, there's a copy of it not in here, and other nights, people have been online, and it's, and it's gone out, so there's no way to get, how is that one coming back?
Because we've been doing this, and that's why I wasn't comfortable telling Counselor Hunter she couldn't participate in the close because we couldn't send her the material until we had this discussion. But it always gives me the willies when that material goes out electronically.
But it's in our procedures to have it to us 24 hours in advance, because how do we read a 15 or 20-page document in a half an hour?
Take the time.
And absorb it all. And make a proper decision on it.
And that's why I'm saying it, because it is, it can be available, to be viewed in the office.
We read it in the office.
Sit in the council chambers downstairs and read it.
They have a hard copy and bring it back?
Nope, no, because it's no different than taking the hard copy out of here and taking it anywhere, it shouldn't be leaving this area. Like, it's closed is closed for a reason.
Should we find out from other communities what they're doing?
Very good idea, yes.
Your worship, I did look at a few others, a lot of them do have the encrypted software, and it will be at a certain time as well, out of your email, it gets very costly. Some do what your worship said is, so if we have a meeting Tuesday, come in 24 hours, like, on the Monday, come into the office and have a look at it there, it stays there, but you can review it, look at everything. The only stuff never emailed, even with the encryption, is HR Matters. That would be one item, never emailed.
Counselor Wilcox?
The whole intent of this motion is to give counselors the opportunity to review when some were substantial presentations at our leisure in our homes, where you can actually stop, think, and review it, and be comfortable doing it. Other communities in the area of Tumisqamishore have a lockbox system where counselors can go in during the week prior to the meeting, it's shoved into their lockbox, it doesn't have to be near, during hours, but they go in, they open the lockbox, they take out the material, they go home with it. Latchford has a similar kind of an accept, a system, because Chris Osmond mentioned to me, he really likes counselors to have an opportunity to properly review the materials so they're comfortable with it before they get into a situation where they're starting to think of making recommendations. And that's what that is all about, as far as keeping stuff, again, as Harry said, you know, we're all under oath to keep the material secret, but there's nothing in this that can't go home with us. I have no idea where that prohibition comes from. In human resource, yes, absolutely, that stays, but anything that is not human resource, you're a counselor, you're sworn into the place, you agree to follow the rules. If we can't be trusted that much, then how can we be trusted at all? To my mind, that's just craziness.
Okay, well, it's not just you that needs to be trusted, it's everybody that has an opportunity in your dwelling that walks through your door, whether it's a visitor, a kid, and a note, on a side note, if you make notes, what are you gonna do with your notes afterwards? Who has access to them?
Are they gonna be very detailed notes?
No, but I'm just saying, anybody that, same as if we make notes when we're in a closed session.
We make notes on, my notes should just be, argue yes for this one, argue no for that one.
And it's always the, always the opportunity that lockers are strong. You know, you pick it up, you put it, you put it in your car, you go in the post office. You know, there's, it's remote when things happen, it's like, closed is closed. If it's judged to be closed, it should stay locked.
Any comments, Counselor Hunter?
I, I was trying to think that, I know, like, right now, I'm the one who seems to be awake. I think that there are ways, like with file sharing programs, maybe this is the encrypted thing that Steve mentioned, that a link could be shared that allows me to go and see a file, I don't know if, like, Dropbox has this sort of thing, but I wouldn't be able to download or edit it just to look at it. I don't know if that's one way that counselors could then have access and they have an exclusive link, and it's the link that's not supposed to be shared, and then the town could then remove that item after the meeting, so it's just a very temporary in place, I'm not sure of something like that. I think for myself, I could make a time to maybe try to have a Zoom meeting with Steve or someone in the office where they could then share screen, and then I could maybe somehow flip through the documents if I need to see them ahead of time, or I could see them at the meeting. or I could see them at the meeting. There, there are some things that aren't. Like I, I agree that there are some things that aren't super confidential. It's kind of an outline of, of very vagueness of what we're gonna talk about. And the real confidential part is our actual discussion. But I, I do want to respect the fact that you want to keep things confidential. And so if I don't receive them in advance, I'll just try to keep up with the conversation.
I like what she's saying here, just we have an opportunity to view it. We don't have anything physical, we can take pictures over your screen or whatever. We're trusted not to do something like that, but I really like that idea that Angela said there. Just be able, we have access to it 24 hours in advance, look at it. We don't have it like sitting on our desk at home where someone can walk by and see something. There's a risk of that, I think. I appreciate Counselor Wilcox, we want to know in advance. We like to like read things so we can make rational decisions and things make sense to me. But I think this might be what she's talking about is more secure way of dealing with this. I, I like it, that's all I'm trying to say.
Can we look into the cost of something like that?
Your worship, what I will do is I can contact our I T provider. But the thing is to remember everyone, they already receive emails, so you would have access with a link to the documents. And that would have to be closed, but I can speak with the I T provider and see what they may be offer other municipalities. We're doing support.
Counselor Cooper?
You speak to Twisling Shores because it was their I T guy that figured out how to do it with minimal costs. So, and you know who their I T guy is, so you have easy access to him.
Counselor Anderson?
Minimal cost to them could be a lot bigger percentage to us, yeah.
That's why, that's why you, you check into the cost, right? 500 bucks is one thing, it's 5,000, it's not. Got to do our research, can't just jump in there.
Okay, so we'll get Steve to check into that and we'll pass back to council. Makes a lot more sense. I'd just like to find a, a secure way to do it because all it takes is one. And it can cause a lot of repercussions.
For sure.
If the, the link was provided to your email, it would be just as if that your, your emails cannot be accessed by anyone else in the household. So that has to be in the back of your mind as well. So if it's a family sharing computer, you run that risk into there, into the encryption. So that's what I can provide a report, but that's the things also to think about.
My computer isn't secure.
My wife has no access to my computer.
Mine's not secure at all.
I can guarantee nobody in my house cares.
More to the point.
I actually won't get, I don't get town mail on my personal computer. I get it on my tablet. Because if something happens, they can have my tablet, I don't care. But I don't want anybody taking my computer.
Yeah. My laptop, my laptop.
I do know when I worked in Toronto, how many, one of the managers got their car broken into and the laptop was in the trunk and the laptop got stolen and there was a lot of confidential information on the laptop. So that caused a lot of huge issues because it was proprietary information. So, and all it takes is just once. Um, okay, so we'll wait, hear back from Steve on this. 6.5, frequency of meetings. We've looked into numerous other municipalities. For example, Englehart, Charlton Dock, Coleman. They've all reduced their meetings so that they're having either one meeting a month or one meeting every three weeks rather than twice a month. And the reason I looked into this was after our discussion on the Q1 tasks is it, there's a lot of time that goes into preparing for a meeting and then following up after a meeting. And when we're doing them twice a month, it takes away the time needed to implement what we pass at a meeting or to give us the reports we need to make the decisions that we want to make. So I think it's something that I'd like everybody to really take a good look at, considering there's also a staff report on it because it'll give more time that the staff needs to get the work done that we're asking them to do in order to implement some of the decisions we're making. Rather than continually making decisions and we're always behind the eight ball waiting for the information and stuff's getting lost in the process. Or we're losing sight of it. I don't know what the rest of it, my mind's not the best.
I just wanted to point out something that you were saying every three weeks is an odd number. I mean, if someone has another job, the scheduling, like right now is the first and third Tuesdays. So it's a two week gap, but there's sometimes going to be the three weeks gaps between the meeting, right? So scheduling is difficult because it can't be uniform because there's not 28 days in a month. So it's gonna get off, right? So that's been a challenge at my work. I, I, I know you don't want to go to, it's not gonna be two weeks because every two weeks would make more sense in that situation. But every three weeks, it would go off again, right? Scheduling is very tough for a business owner to do. So once every four weeks, we make people more sense. Yeah, once a month, even the first Tuesday of a month. It's, I didn't have, I have a problem with the odd number. Even though, you know, it's nice to have the extra time, but it's just hard to do if you have another income or another job to do.
I actually agree with you, I like the once a month scenario. If it's something that needs to be addressed sooner than that, we can always call a special meeting to address what needs to be addressed. But this gives us more time to make decisions and think over decisions. Staff more time to prepare the reports that we need to make those decisions. And I just think it makes a lot more sense. Counselor Cooper?
We're gonna push this to four weeks. Can we change the timeline on what we receive to a week before instead of three days before? Because the package would be that much bigger, right? So if we bring that to maybe the Tuesday of the week before?
Instead of Friday?
Instead of the Friday?
I think that makes a lot of more sense.
Yeah, then bounce meetings to four weeks. As long as we afford that day.
Tuesday or put out early Wednesday, whatever.
Even by end of day Tuesday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, I don't know, have that week, once they get it out, they're kind of off the hook for that. Work on something.
We just don't want to stress them open the office either, right?
Counselor Hunter, any thoughts?
I don't know, we can pay.
Um, I think there's a difference between every four weeks and the first Tuesday of every month. Because of the, every month have like a fifth week sort of in it. So I think I'd prefer an every four weeks. Like you're saying, it's easier for employers on it, it's more even.
Every two months out of the year where we'd have two meetings.
Which would be okay.
Yeah, right. So you have a meeting on the second, if you go 28 days later, the next is gonna be on the third.
13 minutes or 13 meetings a year.
Or we go to once a month.
But that's gonna throw out the scheduling for Jim.
It's the first Tuesday of every month or last Tuesday of every month.
Or just every four weeks, just go exactly every four weeks.
Whatever.
Throw us a bit off, it wins two in one month. If it's Tuesday, it's second or third of the month, then we'll be back on the Thursday. There's 13 four week periods in a year. I don't, I don't know what difficulties it would cause the staff, so.
So we want to stick to once every four weeks? Or do we want to do once a month?
Doesn't affect me at all. Whatever works best for Jim.
Yeah, what works out for Jim.
I don't want everybody to do it.
I can work around it.
Yeah, but you're the one that's on that schedule.
First Tuesday of the month or if it's four weeks, whatever works.
Every, every four weeks would make sense anyways, right? If you're making a schedule.
No, it'll be brought to the next meeting.
Making a schedule would be easier every four weeks, set through, done ahead of time in four weeks, but.
Worship, what I was proposing as it says here. And the staff report is, we would have a committee of the whole meeting on March 5th and then from that date would be the next timeline after that because that is the first Tuesday of March, here we are the first Tuesday of February, so just to coincide within the months.
I do have a question. So we wouldn't have committee of a whole anymore because it seems like right now we have committee of a whole, we talk. And then the next meeting is when we're making a decision and we might have a bit more information. But we're, we're saying as we get rid then of that, like talking, information, understanding meeting. And we would just have the one meeting where we have to hopefully have all the information we need and make a decision or wait for another month and make a decision. So every meeting would be a decision making meeting. And if we can't make a decision, then it's postponed till the next month.
Unless we call a special meeting if it's something that's time critical.
Would we not run a committee in the whole and then the month later, regular, then committee in the whole month? I don't know. Much time between.
So you have to absorb everything in one meeting then.
Which is why the agenda comes out sooner. And if it's something that requires more time, then we can either call a special meeting or we pass it at the next meeting. If it's time critical, we can call a special.
I think like this committee of the whole meeting, people, the public's allowed to see this, the thought process. Hear us talk about things, is that still, would that still happen if we have it every, every four weeks or whatever? So we have, and those meetings would probably be longer.
Be a bit longer, yeah.
Yeah, because you have to have the, the discussion and the whole.
Be a bit longer, but I don't think it's gonna be hugely because we don't have some.
But I just, my point was just have the public.
I don't own both meetings. I want to own the committee in the whole and the regular. Yeah, but I mean, that would be eliminated.
The whole.
For some of the bylaws that do come through, especially the extensive ones. Currently, what we do is put a first, second reading on one month. And then you're waiting to the next regular meeting on the next one. So initially, your committee of the whole, you have it. Two weeks later, okay, your first and second reading. Then four weeks after that, so that's six weeks to have that second reading from the initial discussion back the previous month. This way here, you have your discussion, you're reducing it by actually two weeks.
Which way, sorry?
No, if you have a topic, just as today, you're discussing. And right now, you want to have it in two separate readings. So next meeting would be your regular meeting, first and second reading. Then you have a committee of the whole, then you have your third reading at that.
Next regular meeting.
Yeah, so you look at a six week to push that, by, or to put a bylaw through here, it's.
I ask a question, what, what is best for staff? What is their opinion? What do they think is the better, a better way or is the way we have good?
Honestly, especially with the amount of detail now going into the staff reports as well as we all saw the first task listing requirements there, plus our everyday duties as well. So it is.
So what would you like to see happen, Mike? What would?
Well, that's why.
What would you like to see, that's all.
If you look at the recommendation, they recommend it every three weeks. I think they'd be even happier with every four weeks.
Yeah, that was very important.
I'm looking over there, is there smiles?
So can we bring them, we'll put this to the next meeting for a vote?
Yeah.
Direction?
To every four weeks.
Four weeks? Do you want it to be for four weeks or the first Tuesday of every month? Or you want both or just one?
Counselor Will Cox?
Repeat that a little bit?
Oh, no. If you wanted to have either the motion to be every four weeks or the first Tuesday of every month. That is whatever comes to the side.
One of my concerns would be paying bills. Like right now, we're tending to pay them at the end of the month because that's when we have our council meetings. So maybe not the first Tuesday, maybe it's the third Tuesday, something like that. The other side that bothers me a little bit by this, we tried it 10, 15 years ago in one of the councils I was on, where we had regular council meetings every two weeks, we did away with the committee of the whole. It didn't go well because there was that tendency to rush decisions. And sometimes we regretted them because other information came up not that much later. Or we got reaction from the town not that much later. And we're forever going back at times and revisiting decisions we had made, which gets a little bit uncomfortable in the most of the time. So I think we have to be prepared to march out for that. Council's free to decide whatever you want to do.
Yeah, decide if it's every four weeks, since I'm just thinking aloud here. When do you actually get a chance to discuss things amongst the council? I mean, it's four weeks going by, we can't do it through email because it becomes a court. So how, how do things?
Well, you discuss it at the meeting and it'll come up at the meeting, you discuss it. And some things we know, some things are easy to pass. Some things you may want to wait and pass at the next regular meeting in four weeks. But like Steve explained, right now, we have a committee of the whole where we discuss. Two weeks later, we have a regular meeting.
Yeah.
And if we pass something in a first and second reading, then we have a committee of the whole meeting where we're not passing anything. And then it's the next regular meeting that we're gonna do the third reading and pass it. So right now, it's taking us six weeks if we're doing it and separating our readings out.
Oh, now you're saying.
Yeah. Whereas this way, if you do it in one meeting, you have your discussion. We can do the first and second. It's still not passed until we do the third. Then the next regular meeting, four weeks later, we can do the fourth or the, the third reading and pass it.
Duration, so it's a two month duration.
Four week duration, four weeks or four and a half. Counselor Cooper?
Why don't we just go to a first, second and third meeting? And then the staff reports only once monthly. Right, instead of having a staff, keep the meetings every two weeks, but only get staff reports once a month. So there'll be no staff reports at the second meeting.
But there's still a lot of preparation for the meetings.
It's just to come up here.
They're not gonna do it as often.
Yeah. I don't care, you guys decide.
Yeah, let's push for the four weeks.
Yeah, I'm happy four weeks or once a month, it doesn't matter to me. Now we can do a trial period of.
We can do it for a year, what the heck, right?
And if we're finding it's not working, we can always revisit it.
Yeah, I, I, Gary had a good idea there and revisiting is great. Let's put it in our motion that we revisit it one year hence and see how it's working.
And I think every four weeks.
Every four weeks. And also to revisit it in one year.
And have the agenda material available by end of day, the Tuesday.
Tuesday prior of the weekend meeting, so the agenda will be out there and everyone will have the material ahead of time. Any questions to contact the staff?
And this way it gives staff more time to implement our policies that we're bringing in and we're passing as well.
I like the fact that if I have a question, but I can call in, I think my paperwork Friday, nobody's there till, till Monday. Can't ask anybody.
Okay. Put myself out of order here. 6.6, Twisling Shores and Area Physician Recruitment and Retention Initiative, letter for five year commitment. Which is in here.
We are actually currently in with the, did a five year already and it was a bit more than the 2967 annual contribution, it was actually just over three. So this year works for all the entire Twisling area.
Glasses came off, is that a? Is everybody okay with this? Okay with it? I, I think it's good for us to stay in it. I know that we've got three now in Cobalt. And we've got one and a half in Latchford. Uh, that serves Cobalt as well. But you don't know what future holds. Okay, so we'll bring that, uh, go ahead and.
Yeah.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
Is there a story behind the half that we have down there?
No, that's just what they got approved for.
Oh.
Was.
Somebody shows up for a couple of weeks or?
No, no, it's probably like a, so many hours a week that the other doctors there.
All right.
Uh, six point seven, Association of Municipalities Ontario Resolution Promotes Stability of Municipal Finance. You want to speak to the state?
Yes. Here at AMO, uh, they have noticed. The issues going on financially with municipalities. Especially small municipalities as inflation rises. The costs of everything really doesn't change too much in the municipality and it's costing more and more. So they want to kind of bring things closer together with the provincial government of Ontario, so.
Have their funding keep up with inflation.
Yes.
Rather than the shortfall falling on the municipality.
That gap is getting farther and farther every year.
So. Bring that to the next door.
On the back of the paper, uh, there is, they've already created a draft resolution already. So.
I will bring the resolution to the next meeting.
Bring the resolution to the next meeting.
Yeah. Um, six point eight, Cobalt Public Library Board members, there was one new applicant, Catherine LaFoy. And she's actually Coleman resident. So, it's okay. Okay. Go down.
I, I did, uh, reach out to the library and, uh, mentioned to, uh. Their director, uh, who the applicant was and the.
And six point nine, councillor Anderson, Cobalt Day, December twenty-ninth.
Um, yeah, I've finally, through the last couple of years, I've been thinking like we should do something. Uh, to at least mark our inauguration date for Cobalt. And when we became a town, uh, going along with your, our push to, to get people together in town. You know, make them aware, make them enthusiastic about Cobalt and doing things and everything. And this is one very small little way we can do it. Unfortunately, our forefathers, uh, December twenty-ninth is very busy part of a season. So I can't see us having a big Cobalt Day splash festival, that kind of thing. But at least we can mark it. You know, mention it every year. The one thought I had was then, you know, we can talk to our shopkeepers and instead of Boxing Day special. Many of the stores, they make Cobalt Day special a few days later. Uh, you know, there's little things we might be able to do, but at least to every single year. Mark that date and say, hey, it's Cobalt's birthday. So if you're all happy with that.
I think it's a great idea.
Not the best day of the year.
Not the best day of the year, but you know, we can put it on our social media for that date every year or a couple of days ahead. And so, you know, mark your calendar, it's Cobalt Day.
What, why did we pick?
Because that's when the town was inaugurated, that's when the paperwork was signed.
Back in nineteen oh six.
Go back in time, we'd make it summer.
I think the first, it was December twenty-ninth when all the paperwork came through and everything for it. And then the first, uh, meeting was in nineteen oh seven, like in January nineteen oh seven. And then I'd like to thank you for hunting up the paperwork again. Because I knew it was down there and the, the original was down there in the safe. But it'd been so many years, it was, well, two thousand and six. When, uh, you know, Miners Festival needed to see that paperwork again, so. Remember, and I was hoping. The actual, the actual papers.
Um, so. And maybe we may not be able to do anything on the twenty-ninth, but we might be able to pull it into some kind of Christmas celebration.
That's right, yeah.
Free birthday or. Okay? Six point ten. Create a negotiating committee for upcoming union collective agreement. So, uh, we need two members of council. For our, was it two?
Uh, yes, the previous two years, uh, from our last one.
And I was thinking councillor Hughes, you might be a good one, but the unfortunate thing is it's during the day.
Yeah, it might be a little tricky. I would, I don't know, impossible. I would volunteer for that.
Councillor Cooper?
I'll nominate Jim. I haven't done one.
Why don't you start again?
You'd be a good one for him, he's got the right demeanor for it.
I, I think that, uh, a fresh outlook from two new faces around the table.
Okay.
I agree. Are you okay with that?
Sure. I'm honored, thanks. Thank you.
We've got an expensive one too, haven't we?
Where is this?
A lot of reading.
Councillor Hughes brings some free coffee.
This is where you. This is where you become very familiar with the collective agreement for the union, for the town. Okay, so we'll.
I understand.
Uh, yeah, that would be you. Um, the town manager is usually the spokesman, uh, during the negotiating. And, uh, the committee gets together apart from the union side, they discuss. And then the town manager speaks when, because otherwise you get too many people talking, it could get a little. Hairy. Yeah. And their union rep is usually their spokesperson. From their side. Okay? Seven items for council information, this, District of Tismen Social Services Administration. Oh, sorry, I need a vote. For all the items for council considerations. All in favor? Okay, Carrie.
Just recorded.
Okay, seven items for council information, seven point one, District of Tismen Social Services Administration Board, ESA, twenty twenty-four budget. See the, uh, budget. The acceptance list. Okay? Okay. Um, and then seven point two, the fire truck update, there was another staff report. Then we'll do the draft. Be it resolved, the council accept the items for council information as presented, I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Hughes, councillor Anderson. Okay, discussion, any discussion on seven point one? ESA twenty twenty-four budget? No? Okay. Seven point two, um, any discussion on the fire truck update? Councillor Wilcox.
He has a loan term, uh, with the, uh, Ontario infrastructure. Could we get a quote for ten, for, yeah, ten years or twelve years, something on that order?
I did get a ten-year one.
Okay.
Yep. In comparison, um. To the fifteen years. Uh, the fifteen years is monthly payment of, uh, four thousand six sixty-one ninety-three. For a ten-year one, it'll bring down the interest rate to four point four four. And that monthly payment would be six thousand two forty-seven ninety-nine.
I do have discussion.
Yeah.
When it's my turn. Okay. I, I, I really want. To go back to the beginning. A few, a few months ago, it was like pulling teeth. To approve a budget of twenty-five thousand dollars to try to bid on a used truck. I thi- I think we all agree that our oldest truck needs to be replaced. How to replace that? Like we, we weren't even all in agreement to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on, on a truck that was newer. And then after we did approve the twenty-five thousand, there was this new information. That we somehow needed to have a truck that was twenty years old or less. The implication is that every twenty years, we are going to have to buy a new truck. So this buyout, any of these buyout scenarios? I, I don't care how much we're paying every year, you have to look at the cost for twenty years and then start over again from zero. Like this. It's incredible, the amount of money that suddenly we're going to have to put out. And I don't have anything in writing that actually proves to me that we have to have a new truck every twenty years. I need to see that. I need to see that in writing from somewhere and know unequivocally that that is actually the scenario. Um, because we've heard it, but nobody's really entirely sure, understands. Apparently our insurance rates are going to go up. I want to know. I need to know that that is actually what's going to happen and the long-term consequences and what our other options are. We have a Halibree Fire Department that I'm sure has a truck that's twenty years old or less. We have Coleman, we have partners that supposedly will be able to meet this. There's no way that every tiny community is spending over fifty thousand dollars, between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars a year. For a fire truck that hardly gets used. So can we then contract Halibree or Coleman at a considerably? We were like pulling teeth for a twenty-five thousand dollar truck that would maybe last us ten years. Now, I think we would be like thrilled to only pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, to have somebody else somehow meet that requirement for us with some sort of a contract. I just can't do this. I, I just can't. It's, it's too much money. Without a hundred percent proof that we have to do this.
Okay, well, first of all. I'll speak on this because I've spent a lot of time on this. Um, this is why every other municipality's fire department is continually fundraising. And I mean continually, not once a year. But all year round. Um, so I'm going to put a call out to our fire department that they have to start fundraising. And this is one of the reasons why, this is how other municipalities are able to afford it. There's two requirements. There's your NFPA requirement. Which as long as it passes the pumper test, it can be certified and stay in service. There's your fire, um, fire underwriters. Requirement that your primary cannot be older than. And I always get this part confused, whether it's fifteen or twenty years.
It can't be more than nineteen because.
Can't be more than nineteen years old or your rates go up. We've had communication, uh, I raised this with Mr. Vantoff. Um, we got an email back that basically said, tough luck, you're on your own. This is how it is. Um, I've raised it with AMO. Um, I think there's going to be more pressure going back on the higher levels of government. That. The requirements that are in place for the fire, uh, underwriters. Is based on what's required for larger city centers. It doesn't take into account that smaller municipalities like ours. Their trucks don't go out as often. There's not as much mileage on them. Not as much wear and tear on them. They're going to last longer. So why can't it be closer to the NFPA standards? If as long as it passes the pressure test and the pump test, why can't it stay in service? It's still good. This is why when you look at places like GovDeals, trucks that are ten, twelve and fifteen years old, old. Are going cheaper. Because nobody wants, none of the smaller municipalities really want them. Because it does us no good to get them. Because as fast as you get them, can't be your primary. Because it does nothing for your insurance rating. So our choices are. We get a truck. We're already having a hard time with our budget. We meet the fire underwriters' requirements. Or we don't get one, we have one that passed the test. But we still need a second one. At some point here. Um, and then the impact is on the homeowners that live in our area. Because when their insurance gets the rating for our area, it's going to be higher.
Why?
So I need, I need to see that in writing. I need that from the insurance underwriter in writing that it's going to impact their insurance. Because we've managed to go this many years without it, so.
Survey wasn't updated and when questions started getting asked, it brought it to their attention that we hadn't done a survey in a number of years. And now they're requesting a new survey.
Fine, I need it, I still need it in writing from them. Right now it's just being, it's a lot of hearsay. So I need that in writing and I need to know that it can't be provided as a service from another nearby community that's within a certain kilometerage. So that we couldn't contract Halibree or Coleman at twenty-five thousand dollars a year to meet that same level of service. Or just contract out fire services a hundred percent altogether. If we've got that covered, what is their actual requirement?
Well, that's a big discussion to be having with another municipality and then you're talking shared services. And I always have a concern when we talk about shared services for something.
I have a concern when we talk about fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars a year for taxpayers.
Well, I have a concern that if my house is on fire and there's a house in Halibree that's on fire, who's getting first response? When you're sharing services for something like fire services.
So if we still have our other fire truck here and we're still able to respond.
We can't contract somebody and keep our fire department going too. It's got to be one of the.
Why not?
It's cost, if you're going to double dip the cost, why wouldn't you just go one way or the other?
Because I am suggesting that we double dip in a way that saves us. So that we're not buying a new fire truck or we buy one that replaces the twenty-five thousand dollar one we were thinking of. And then we contract services just for the requirement of having access to a truck that meets the age requirement. At a far discount to the actual cost of buying one every twenty years.
Councillor Starcher?
Do you remember, um, um, the fire chief being here last time? When this, all this news came out that we, we, we need the, the new updated one? You could, you could even go with that scenario, Angela, but I believe he said that we wouldn't be able to go help other areas. We think we'd be relying on them, but we'd never be able to go and help the other community around us be part of that. Just wondering, wondering. Yeah, because I was, I was in concern, that's why I thought right away, well. Yeah, because I was concerned, that's why I thought right away, well, we need to get. A fire truck, a new one, just to keep up with everything and.
So we could have two. They don't have to be within twenty years old, we would still have two, so we could still send one, they still need our expertise, we have far more training. And knowledge than many of the other communities that are in our partnership, we still have a lot to offer. It, it, all we're trying to do is meet the ridiculous requirement of having a fire truck that's twenty years old or less. I'm not saying we don't have operational fire trucks. But I'm saying we don't. Pay for a new fire truck, that isn't going to be used enough, that according to mechanics I've talked to. Is going to require extensive amount of maintenance because we're not actually using it enough. Because it wasn't made or designed for small communities. So we're all, like, there's so many more costs beyond the even purchase cost at this point. I need to know from the insurance underwriter that there isn't another way that we can get around this, that would be lower cost.
Yeah, I seem to remember that.
That was for. Our chief to fill and submit to them.
I've requested that the fire chief be come to our next mayor's meeting. For some discussion with council. Once, I'll get you in just a second. Funny enough, that not long ago I actually received an email, don't know where, it just came out of the blue. Clarifying who a fire department and a fire chief actually reports to. And a fire chief and fire department actually report to council and mayor individually and as a whole. Not to the town manager. So. I, I think some discussion needs to be had. About the survey that has to be done and submitted. And a letter of that, a copy of that letter will be provided to council so that they can see it in writing for themselves. I'd like to see what the response of the survey is before it gets sent in. I think council should all be aware of that and what the impact is going to be. And we'll take it from there. Councillor Cooper?
I'm just going to touch on the same thing, that maybe manager needs to send us all the information we need prior to our fire chief coming. You know, the NFPA rules and the underwriters' rules. And whatever correspondence that went back and forth, and then we can, we can judge from that.
I, I think that's something that we need to request from our fire chief, because a lot of that information goes to him.
He hasn't part of the touch yet, or to, to manager?
Just the, when we got that request from the survey.
Yeah.
Came through us.
But NFPA goes through the fire chief. I would believe.
Or that may be to Steve, or to yourself, and then you distribute to councils, we can at least have some information before they get here. If he answers to you.
Gather all the information to provide counsel.
All right.
Yeah, I was just saying, the, the insurance underwriters, if, if they could give us like a number. How much everybody's taxes would go up if we don't do this upgrade with the fire trucks? It would be actually more or less than the amount that we'd be paying for a new fire truck. Because are they going to just collect it from those taxpayers anyways? As we don't have.
It's actually not taxes, it's your insurance.
Or the insurance.
Your insurance premiums that you pay.
With the tax cost.
They will be able to tell us that, they can tell us what percentage, like what our rating will go from to. But in, insurance is like taxes, it's individual and it's based on the size of your house, how your house was made, when it was made. So that's a very subjective thing.
My, my insurance provider told me anything between five and seven hundred for my house. It would go up if our rating changed. One year, five and seven hundred. And with, I think if you do the math on that, on a new truck, we're going to put the taxes up approximately, well. I'd say put the taxes up, but it would cost us to, less than two hundred bucks per option. But sooner give my money to the town of Cobalt and to the insurance company knows.
But not every resident may feel like that.
So would you sooner give six hundred dollars to somebody else?
I'm, I'm just pointing out that not every resident may feel like that. We're here to represent the residents on a broad scale, right?
After the majority.
So.
Make the best decision that we can.
Councillor Wilcox?
Well firstly, Steve, if you could ask our insurance provider what it would affect the town. We can certainly get that number. That would begin to give us an indication of what the overall cost is going to be. But secondly, and I agree with Harry's point. I, I, I'm, his insurance provider would know what they're going to charge him in the absence of a decent fire rating. And I don't think anybody's going to be hugely different in their experience. I can call my insurance provider, it's probably the same one, so I don't know if that's going to help a lot. But, yeah, it just strikes me that it's an enormous cost either way. But one may be less costly overall to the taxpayer, and that's the one we should be looking at. The other thing is, just, and, and again, a motherhood statement, but one of our primary responsibilities is safety in the community. And a fire truck that's dependable and reliable is a significant feature of that.
And if we don't have a fire department, we have to have a fire prevention officer.
I remember one of the concerns the last time the fire chief was here about the safety of his, of his staff. Going into a fire with a fire truck that's not quite as good as it should be, that's why I remember that concern, he was saying that. I don't know if you guys recall this, he was concerned about the safety of our department.
But the onus can't be completely on the town, our fire department has to become part of our community, and they have to help us help them.
And the other, the other big factor to me, if we contract out so we don't have our own fire department here, we don't have. We don't have the, the call out immediately with nine one one for heart attacks, stuff like that. There's been so many cases that our fire department gets to a person before the ambulance gets them. And they do the first response and keep them alive until they can get the, you know, until an ambulance gets here. And that's a, that's a big thing that would be missing out of our community. Because we don't have a fire truck and we have our services somewhere else, we're not going to have that, that other truck here and that response.
Yeah, I think my daughter told me it was eleven minutes average ambulance. To get you. And every minute, and all you. You know, every minute's ten percent, so Denver, ten minutes is a hundred percent.
Looking to contract out doesn't have to be mutually exclusive. If all you need is access to a twenty year old or less fire truck. And that's all you're contracting out for access to. To meet that requirement, it doesn't mean you have to get rid of your current. Fire department. And you can still upgrade and get a twenty one year old truck that nobody else wants, that is good. The fire department's always going to be worried about safety. As of day one that a new truck moves into the garage, they're going to be worried about safety, that's their job. Nothing they do is safe. So they're always going to talk about safety.
I guess we'd have to look at if there's any other municipalities that do a combination. I don't know of any off the top of my head, I know some that do contract fire services, Tormo being one of them. Because they couldn't afford to keep their fire department going any longer. So they contract services for Elton now. So. There's not going to be an immediate answer either way at this point. But I think it's definitely a discussion with the fire chief and get some input from him as well. Okay. Councillor Wilcox?
Could I ask that we put a sense of priority on this then? We've been kicking this particular can down the road for a very long time now. And I think may have its time, we started getting closer to a decision rather than let's find more research.
Well, I don't. I don't know that, again. We jump in hasty and regret it, or we do our due diligence and take our time and make the right decision.
I guess I'm suggesting let's do our due diligence, we get it done.
I don't even know if the fire underwriter survey has been completed. We have no idea, we haven't heard anything.
And else?
Yeah. Councillor Hughes?
I think maybe it's a good idea to see a little further along in the budget too, if we can even squeeze it into the budget before we do too much today.
Yes, that's a big monthly payment to be looking at coming in on budgets.
And also, if we, if we did go for that new truck, he said it would be a year and a half. If we come up with a, I've come up with a decision, still to be a year and a half before you even get one.
Worship, the fire chief gave me specs on this one because this one is only a couple hundred.
Or you can give that to me, that's okay.
In other words, it's almost made, but not sold.
Okay, so I guess we'll get the information gathered for council and we'll have the fire chief come to the committee of the next meeting. Let's get the discussion moving along. Is that acceptable? Sorry?
We do a special meeting on that to get. Get this rolling.
Hughes away right now.
I think he may be back soon, but I want to get all the information together for this, so that would be in. We've got a meeting in two weeks anyway, so I have to bring him in for in two weeks, see if he's available.
At the regular meeting? All right. Okay. So I guess that was our discussion, all in favor? Harry? Eight unfinished business, there is none, new business, mayor's report? I don't think we had anything I wanted to cover off. Now my year end is done, well, the big part of my year end is done, I'll be setting up some meetings with. Hopes that attended and signed up. For the community, when we did the community initiative meeting and community engagement in December. To start pulling together maybe some plans and we will put out a list of tasks we may need volunteers, volunteer for. Once we pull some ideas together, we said we'd set another meeting, Leanne and I, in February. We'll put a notice out for anybody who wants to attend and try and flesh out any, any ideas we had for spring. See if we can get moving on something. And that's about the only update I have. So ten, closed meeting, draft motion, be it resolved that council convene in a closed session as per section two thirty nine of the municipal act. Two thousand and one as amended in order to address the matter pertaining to subsection two A. The security of property of the municipality or local board. And two I, a trade secret or scientific tech, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information. Supplied incompetence to the municipality or local board. Need a mover in the secondary? Councillor Cooper, councillor Starcheck, all in favor? Harry? So we'll take a ten minute recess and the recording will not resume after the close session. Okay? And I got a.